So it's six o'clock and I'd like to reconvene the meeting. And we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our June 2nd Select Board Meeting. It actually started at five o'clock. We had a couple of site visits that we'll be talking about when we get to Agenda Item Number Four. First item on our agenda now, before we go on, Julie Hans will be with us a little later on in the meeting. And so we're gonna put old business down the line somewhere, so when she shows up, we'll go through old business when she's here. If that's okay with everybody. So the first item is to approve our minutes from our May 19th Select Board Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve our May 19th, 2021 Meeting Minutes.
Lee Goodson's the motion and Lee Dakin's the second.
I have an amendment to one of the lines.
Good. I'm sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
Okay. Under line like 106, which says, "I thought the Canal Street property would be a good location." I still think that, but I would like it noted that we still have to consider the 200-foot setback for the well. And that's the only problem I see with that. Yep, radius around the well over there.
Jeff, we could note it in the minutes, but also bring that up when we talk about it on Agenda Item also.
Yeah, I just wanted to...
That is a big item.
Yep.
Anything else? Anybody else have anything on the minutes, any corrections or changes besides the addition that Jeff just had?
I have none.
I have none.
All those in favor of approving the minutes with the addition that Jeff stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All set. Citizens' comments, if there's someone here that would like to address the board on an issue that is not on the agenda. Now would be the time to do so. It's pretty quiet. Old business is the next Agenda Item, but what we're gonna do is put that off until Julie comes back and hopefully, well, she might not, huh?
I just got word that she may not be here, so anyways, I don't wanna announce why because, you know. But I think we could either, you know, we've all read it, discuss it.
We can go over them. I don't see why not.
Yeah, and move on.
No, we can go through it just, you know, as a board by ourselves. In the Public Safety Building, they're working through the final details. I'm just gonna kinda look at her notes that she's given us, so people out in the public can hear it also. It still looks like ARPA funds can be used for the project, so that'll be interesting to see how that's gonna work and help with the cost impacts with the building and the Highway Garage project. The signage is just about done after all the hoops we jumped through and the state got their act together. So that'll be coming up and it looks like we're gonna be installing four signs this summer, directing people to the Village Green and with the words "shop, dine, and stay." And I think that was one of the controversies regarding the signs, the fact that it was saying something like "shop, dine, and stay." But that's all, looks like it's gonna work out. Ash inventory, we had a group meet last week with training for the app, which was, it worked out pretty well. It was kinda hard for people that aren't computer savvy to work an app on Zoom and try to get the finer details of how it works, but they're gonna be having another meeting.
I'm sorry, excuse me. I missed the first part of what you were saying.
About the ash inventory, the group that met?
Okay, I found that really difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad I listened to it, glad I was there for it, but I couldn't understand most of what she was talking about.
Yeah, and it's tough to get that when you're not in person, so you can't just walk over and like help you through it and stuff. So you're on a computer trying to work a hand computer.
Right.
And that just, you know.
So if we, do we have, maybe you're not finished talking about that, but I wanted, do we have people lined up who wanna be on a committee to go around and identify trees?
Well, there was a group of, what, six or eight people at that last meeting? That are willing to take that on.
I'd like to go with someone who knows what they're doing, then I could understand it better.
And there were some people in the group that were more versed in identifying trees.
Right.
And there was other people that were more computer literate. So maybe partnering up with people like that and it would help.
And if you're neither?
Well, you could learn.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a hand app that's hooked into the state, which is pretty cool, because it, all the information statewide gets fed into a central data bank.
Well, and do they need more people or, oh, they do, okay.
Yeah.
I couldn't go to the meeting.
It looks like June 3rd at six o'clock to determine the next steps and get the inventory moved forward. So I'm at last meeting, I think it was six o'clock or something like that.
June 3rd is tomorrow.
It was pretty interesting. The app's interesting because of the information that's on it.
Where do you get the app?
There's an instruction sheet that you can get ahold of from Julie and it'll tell you, it's from the App Store, but then you gotta log on and it has on the login information to get onto the state part of it. Because this is an app that's used in a lot of places and the demonstration part of it is in New York or some other place like that. So you have to have the login information and the password to get into the tree inventory when that's specific to Chester. And then you work it from there.
Okay.
Sorry, was there any recommendation relative to not using that app unless you'd been trained in it? Or what's the thought on that?
I don't know the answer. I mean, you mean use a different app?
No, no, but I didn't go through the training, so if I download the app, would I be able to?
If you're okay with a computer and you seem like you do pretty well with it and, you know, the cellphone one, yeah, it's not that.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if they were wanting to make sure that people have been through some kind of training or whatever.
That sheet that came that had the training on it spelled it out pretty well. So if you're computer literate, you could probably get away with that. This was to help people that were having trouble getting the app or, you know, applying it or using it and stuff. And there are some criteria in there that are specific to the ash inventory. The sizes of trees and a few other setbacks from the road, because we're basically there inventorying trees that are...
Okay.
So, which is three rods, 50 feet around or something.
Right, right. Thank you.
But yeah, there's more information tomorrow, June 3rd at six o'clock. Or just give Julie a call at the town office and she could email you the information sheet that has all the items that you would need on there if you wanted to do it just on your own and get through there. And it's not too bad. Yosemite, the firehouse, the neighbor there, Sarah Wine Gardner. She agreed to donate .3 acres to the town of Chester to help that project go forward. Part of it's gonna be for parking, I believe, on the left side of the building as you're looking at it. So that's coming along. They're gonna be doing a DRB boundary line adjustment Monday night. So once that is all set and done, it's just another step forward in moving that project along, which is actually really nice of the lady to donate the land to the town of Chester. It's pretty special to do that and it's .3 acres of her property. That she just did it down to help us, you know, come along for something that we're doing. So I'd just like to acknowledge and thank Sarah Wine Gardner about that donation.
And maybe when the time comes, we could do something formally, a plan or something. Because, you know, the whole project, my understanding would be much more difficult without that, so...
Maybe not even possible, because that building sits on a poacher stamp-sized lot. I mean, you've got the river and a cliff and a little piece of dirt on one side. So without that .3 acres, I'm not sure you'd be able to do anything there.
Well, and it's gonna be for parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. That's lovely.
It continues the building down to an area to get up there and stuff, but yeah. So that is good news. The Brookside Bridge behind the Academy Building, the summer, the Vermont Youth Conservation Corps will be in there. And I believe it's, I'm not positive of the dates, I think it's late June, early July, that they'll be there for, I'm not sure if it's five days or 10 days, but enough, plenty of time to do the trail. That's marked off. I know the Chester Conservation Committee has spent some time flagging the trail over the hill and up the hill there and across and around. And it's probably about a mile-long trail that's gonna be coming down to the bridge that's gonna be... And Julie said she's looking for additional funds to help with the project. We have funds right now for the bridge to build it across the river, but possibly maybe we can continue on with a boardwalk a little further. The original plan was just have a raised dirt path after the bridge came down and the water would just flow over it. But another idea was to bring it up about two or three feet, to let the water run underneath and have a boardwalk along the way with a few turnouts as you go to get you to the other side. And I think that's about 60 feet altogether, where it finally goes up a little higher and hits a old farm road or maybe it was a town, I'm not sure if it was a town road back there or something, but it's an obvious trail that follows along some brick walls and some beautiful old fence posts with steel in them from old gates and stuff like that. And if it had the boardwalk all the way across up to this flat area, it would all be ADA accessible, which would be really special for that path. Of course, you're not gonna make it around the whole mile loop because of the hill and everything else, but it would have a trail so you can get up and over the bridge, onto a boardwalk, up to a flat path and go both directions to the property edges and stuff. And there's some nice views that way and then come back down and, you know. That's gonna work out really well, too. So the kids will be there, the Conservation Corps will be doing the trail. The town is planning on building the bridge towards the end of the summer, I believe. I'm not exactly sure of the time, but it is on this year's schedule. So that's gonna be, that's pretty exciting. And Ron Patch came in and had an idea, and I didn't read too much through this, but he talked to me a couple of months ago about the Jeffrey bar. And he was, he had some, I thought, some really good ideas about it. And a lot of it was pretty inexpensive and not easy to do, but the town is capable of doing, which is basically clearing up the area, getting rid of some of the brush, freeing up the building so that the growth doesn't impose on the buildings and stuff. Moving one of the bronze plaque to a place that is a little more prevalent as opposed to right on the side of 103 where it's crazy driving by, where you could actually, you know, make it out, take a walk and look around the property and see what it was like and have a plaque there and stuff. You know, we're past the point, I think, when we've talked about this in the past, about trying to save that building. It's a tough one, the money involved and what it would take to do anything with it and the size of it and stuff. But preserving the land around it and the homestead and the history that goes with it, with the...
Foundation.
Everything else, it was an important part to save for the town and, you know, we could do what we could do with the barn as it comes up. I know we had some feelers out for a while for people that come around and dismantle barns. A lot of times they do it just for the timber or the lumber that's in it. This one's a historic building, but there was something about, it wasn't hand-hewn. It was, I think it's still with an old machine and an old mill and it's old lumber and stuff, but it's not super old or super valuable as far as that kind of, I'm not exactly sure how that works and stuff, but...
The past may have had some redo.
Repurpose.
That needed to do to so it wouldn't rot and fall down.
Yeah.
So that might be why the timber isn't as old as the original.
I'm not sure, you know, the old timbers that are in there, the post and beam and stuff like that. I forget the dates on that, on the whole property, on what it is. The monument's from 1901, it says.
Arnie, I know that there was a group that was trying to figure out a way to actually save the building.
There is.
And some discussions have been had, but the, I think the sticky point is the liability associated with getting in there. And so I'm not sure whether it's worth more discussion to see if there's something that we as a town can do to help that group out. But it's a, it's kind of a stickler, because you don't want anybody to get hurt in there and us be liable for it, but on the other hand, be ashamed to see the barn just fall down or, you know, collapse. So I think there's some, some room for us to have additional discussions about that. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, the last few times I've driven by, I noticed that the door on the front right next to the road is open. And I'm not sure if that's on purpose or it just fell off the hinges or what, but I know there's a no trespassing sign on that, but you got an open door that kinda gets ignored.
I'll mention it to Julie and somebody from the Highway Department can go there, maybe it was Ron or something, but you're right about the liability part of it. And if there is a group that's interested in trying to, you know, work on the place or save it, I think it's well worth a conversation to see what the options are and take it from there. I mean, I would never turn my door, close my door on someone that wanted to come along and try to help the town out or historic project in town if they needed a little bit of help from the town or whatever we could do to, you know, help things along.
Yeah, I guess the discussion would have to be between Julie and our attorneys about what kind of liability we wanna take on and whether it's worth increasing our insurance or doing something to cover people, because, you know, it wouldn't be necessarily town employees in there, so that's part of the issue, nor would it be somebody we'd contract with that would have to have their own assurance. So anyway, just thought I'd bring that up.
It's a worthwhile discussion for sure, especially with the goal of helping that building as opposed to it coming down. It's a huge, beautiful barn.
Yeah, yeah.
Chester Community Greenhouses is on the agenda and everything else is pretty much on the agenda, so... That's old business unless someone else has any other old business they'd like to discuss or have any comments about or concerns.
Not at this time for me.
All right, so we're gonna head over to number four, which is the community greenhouse discussion. We have a couple of members from the community greenhouse here with us. It was quite, well, it was the board that was there and a lot of members from the community greenhouse. We did a site visit at five o'clock at the Canal Street site. And then about 5:30 wandered over to the Academy Building site. And I think it was a great idea, Heather, that you had about sticking it out to give you an idea of what the layout would look like and give you a proportion thing on size and location and stuff. It really helped, because the two lots are, they're both town property, but they're very dissimilar as far as attributes of what they have going for them and not going for them. And one thing that was brought up, Jeff, which is interesting about the Canal Street site, was the 200-foot possible setback. Jeff, can you elaborate on that?
Yes, because it's still listed with the state as an emergency backup well. And any well that's used for public water consumption, it has to have a 200-foot setback radius all the way around it. Can't be any building, any fertilization, you know, none of that can be allowed. So right now, that still has that status. But we're trying to work with the state on getting a secondary well, putting it up on the Jeffrey Well Aquifer and maybe taking this one out of service or reducing it or... It would be nice if we could, if we put the greenhouse over there, then we could downsize the pump and we could pump that water and use it for watering the gardens and stuff over there rather than taking it out of our system.
Well, that's one of those, you know, the positive of one site and the negatives of, you know, of each site. And that was one of the positives, that one, that was the well was there. But now it turns out that it's not actually a positive because of the state. And it's interesting, because Cheryl Joy is with us also, she was at the site and she had information from the state also that was contrary to that, that did not say anything about the 200-foot setback, which was interesting. I mean, you talk to two different state agencies and you get two different answers. And that's kinda discerning when you have a group that's trying to do what they're doing and you come up with a little glitch in the road here, you know, as far as location of the site. Because if that's true on the 200 feet, it doesn't seem like it would be feasible to put it on that piece of property there. So that's a tough one. The, both sites are beautiful. I mean, it's great to have options on it for sure. Robert, would you like to talk about our visit today or add on to it or?
No, I agree with you. I think...
Robert, excuse me, Robert, you have to come over to the mic, sorry.
I think you're absolutely right that being able to see it, being able to see the footprint really puts it in perspective. So I'm glad we did that. I know it was eye-opening even for us. You know, we looked at map after map after map, but until we put the stakes in the ground, you really get a better concept of what it's gonna look like. As we mentioned, as a board, we voted that we would prefer the Academy Building site for a lot of the reasons we discussed, the proximity to the green, proximity to local business, walkable parking and all of those things. But again, we could make both sites work. But the issue that Jeff raises is pretty critical. There isn't 200 feet. There isn't enough room to put the greenhouse there if the 200 feet really does apply. So I think unless that changes, that kind of eliminates the site for us at the moment.
Right, we're still working with the state on that, trying to get that clarified, what we can do there with that.
I also know that there have been concerns made by the property abutters to that site. And we don't, I don't know, for instance, how much people, let's say their house faces Grafton Street, how far back do they own, you know, where is their property lying?
Well, it's pretty defined. There's stone posts.
Okay, but then at the same time, you think about all of the surrounding. I mean, there are a lot of abutters to that. And the nice thing, the really, you know, I think that parking could be a problem. And I also, I just think it's so walkable and so beautiful behind the Academy Building.
The only question I have there is what are your plans for water and wastewater for sewage or whatever? Are you gonna put a compost and toilet out there or just...
Well, again, we were talking about the possibility that we might be able to use the Academy Building if in the future that opens up, given that it has bathrooms already. That really allows us to make less of an impact on the site, because the facilities are already there.
Okay.
We did identify connectivity to water and electric as being more of a challenge at that site. There's a longer way to go, so clearly we have to trench more, so that's an expense. But I think it's manageable, but it's certainly not as easy as the Canal Street site would be very simple in that regard.
So was your expectation that the board would vote on one side or the other tonight? Or what's the end game here?
Really, you know, in terms of the timeframe, we defer to you. I mean, this is a process that you'd have to investigate, discussions with the town attorney and all of those things. You know, the end game is, can we get an agreement to use one side or the other?
Yeah.
And that really, that is determined by you rather than us.
Right, and I think from my position, or from, I think both could be very feasible. I think somehow aesthetically, behind the Academy Building is just absolutely lovely space.
It is a beautiful location. And I think also that the historical nature of the greenhouse, I mean, this is 1936 greenhouse. It has a pedigree, you know, the plans are on file with the New York Botanical Garden. It fits the historical nature of downtown. Yeah, I mean, it's a perfect place to put it. It blends in. And we talk about, you know, being consistent with the character of the neighborhood. In that case, I think it's extremely consistent with the character of the neighborhood.
So what I'm getting is we probably need Julie here to have input about what she found out about the attorney, right?
I don't think the conversation has happened yet with the attorney. If it has, it's just been preliminary because of some other issues that have been going on. So we've been kind of...
Right.
Taken over by a few things that came up that we weren't expecting. But the conversation, I think, is supposed to be happening this week to at least start it, to see what the legal aspects are as far as whatever direction we go.
And it seems like we need a really sound decision on the water and the well at that site.
And I also know that for several years, we've been working on trying to get those bathrooms opened in the Academy. And with my understanding, that the handicap bathroom is a workable bathroom at this time.
Well, they both are inside there.
Oh, I didn't think the other one was.
Yeah, it's a little rough, but it's...
Well, and then of course there's the price, you know, not getting into the main building when you just wanna go in and use the bathroom. There need to be some changes made and some additional stuff, but that's an impetus to continue to work on that. So I think that's really important.
And the thing is with the bathrooms, they're basically three-season right now, because there is no central heat in that building.
That's correct.
So whatever happens there at this stage, winter is out.
Right.
You know, I mean, you still have quite a bit.
The greenhouse would use mostly three seasons anyway.
At this point, it'd be three-season, because we'd have to have some sort of heating system in there. And that's gonna take a while to develop, so we're really looking at three-season. It is a process.
Robert, what was that you said about a heating system? Where?
In the greenhouse itself. If we were gonna go to full four seasons, we'd have to have some sort of auxiliary heat.
Supplemental heat, yeah.
But there's no question, we could do a very long three-season without heat.
Robert, on the power for the greenhouse behind the Academy Building, are you looking for solar power or are you gonna run power out there?
Well, you know, I think initially at least, we'd like to connect to the grid. But if solar is a possibility in the long term, that makes much more sense. But again, that's a different impact on the site. That has to be considered. And if it's practical, I think that's a great solution. But otherwise, we're gonna have to connect.
Eric, you're gonna need water and at some point, heat, if that's the, if that's the direction that you're gonna go. So trying to balance the amount of infrastructure you have to put into place in order to maintain the utilities or get utilities to the building is something that I would think would factor into the location that is selected, whether it be the Academy Building or the well field. The well field, obviously, you have water there, you have electricity there. It'd be much, much less expensive to do that. So just from my perspective, thinking about the implications of all that and how to do it, you know, solar is an option. I would think it'd be a better option at the well field just because you have more open sky than at the Academy Building. But again, there's a bunch of expense and thought that has to be put into that, how you would do that. But if you don't mind my asking, just a few questions, and I appreciate the document that you submitted to us as a board, laying out the plan and all the, a lot of thought went into that, and I really appreciate that. There's a couple of things that I was looking for that I didn't quite see, and maybe I just missed it. But one is, there's some concern relative to property values, and I think Lee alluded to this relative to some concerns that the neighbors have with that. And so has there been an assessment? I know you mentioned in an earlier presentation that normally, in the presence of a community greenhouse like this, property values go up, but I'm just wondering if there's been any discussion with the neighbors or an assessment of the acceptance of this in either of the neighborhoods. There are seven property abutters for the well field site versus four for the Academy Building site, so there'd be a little bit less impact on the neighborhood per se at the Academy Building. But that was just one of the questions that I had is relative to what the property values are like. Secondly, the external gardens that you've mentioned in the document, would that be in-ground raised beds? And what kind of fencing, if any, would you see or envision for that particular aspect of it?
Again, the external gardens are an option.
Okay.
It really depends on the site and how we're able to utilize the site. You know, if it's the perspective of the Select Board, you don't want us to sprawl out beyond the actual footprint, then the external gardens are not an option. But if they are, it would be raised beds essentially.
Yeah.
We have not talked about fencing. My personal preference is that we don't have fencing. I think that that's kind of intrusive on the site visually, kind of thing.
Yeah, and, you know, I know in where I live, I have to have fencing, otherwise, you know, I don't get anything out of it. But yeah, from my perspective, the more garden space, the better, you know, you're able to use that property. But then there's the other aspects of site maintenance, like... there's the, um, other aspects of site maintenance, like mowing and plowing and, um, tree trimming or removal. I think the tree trimming slash removal would be more of an issue at the Academy Building because you'd be closer to mature trees that might have propensity to drop stuff on expensive glass. So, I, it just seems like, um, that's something that you may have thought about. I didn't see it referenced in the document, so I'm just asking that.
One of the reasons we calculated the 40-foot setback, even though we didn't need to do that from a zoning perspective, is to stay clear of branches dropping.
Right, okay.
You know, technically, there are a couple of big trees there, and technically, one of them could come down, I guess.
Right, right.
In terms of those kind of maintenance expenses, they have to be built into an operational budget. Um, and that's really the phase we've just begun to work on. What is it going to cost us to do this annually?
Right, right.
And there's plenty of models out there, so we don't have to necessarily reinvent the wheel.
Right. And, and again, I'm not expecting you to have all these answers just like this. I'm just bringing up some of the concerns that I thought. So, um, the other one that I had, uh, that I didn't see any discussions about was the plant restrictions, whether, I know there's some reference to noxious plants or whatever that, um, we are aware of. But if this is truly a community garden and we're, um, not selective or specifically, um, purposeful in what kind of plants are grown, I'm just wondering what the impact would be on the community of Chester if, say, somebody decided they wanted to grow pot in the greenhouse. And whether that was something that you guys considered and/or said, "No, we're not going to." Because personally, I would have an issue with that as part of a Chester community greenhouse to grow, it's not illegal anymore, but certainly something that's not necessarily community or family-friendly. So, that was the other question I had because that wouldn't be in keeping with the community values.
And we've had that exact discussion about that issue. But even beyond that, um, basically, we want to capture that in a user agreement. So, if somebody says, "I'd like to have a space in the greenhouse," you have to sign a user agreement, which says you're going to do certain things. You can't use noxious chemicals. You can't endanger the other people growing in there. You have to abide by all the laws, that kind of thing. No invasive species that could possibly go to seed and then spread in the area. So, that would be defined.
Would you be pushing, sorry to interrupt, would you be pushing organic farming?
Yes, absolutely. Especially in the greenhouse, because in the enclosed environment, we don't want chemicals flying around.
Right, right.
Uh, you know, somebody may have an allergic reaction, reactive airway or whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, so it would be absolutely organic.
Okay.
And we'd have to drill down into the technical aspects of, can they use biological controls, that kind of stuff.
Right.
And that would be determined basically by best practice standards. Uh, but we'd use as a model, uh, organic certification as a model.
Okay.
Well, you mentioned about the neighbors, and I just wanted to go back to that. We've been hoping from the beginning that every time we have one of these meetings, the neighbors will come. Uh, we've had some individual discussions with people. One of the neighbors did contact me and talked about the property value impacts and some other concerns. Uh, and we've had a discussion with that person. They seem to be satisfied with the answer that we gave them. But you never really know. I mean, if, uh, you know, it gets to the point where we have an approved site and we start talking about a site plan, people may express concern.
Right, yeah.
We'd rather talk about it right from the get-go. So, anybody who wants to talk about it or has a specific concern, uh, we should like to hear about it, that's for sure.
Yeah.
We may, it may be as simple as adjusting our plans to make it more compatible. Um, I mean, generally, all we've heard is support, but that doesn't mean that there's not.
Right. So, have you reached out to the, uh, Butters on each law at this point?
Not everyone, no, we haven't.
Is that a plan that you're going to implement, or is that?
We would absolutely do that. But again, we didn't want to jump the gun and.
Right, right.
Be presumptive that we're going to be able to build on one side or another.
Right, okay.
But to your point, the Academy Building poses less of that kind of issue, just.
Can I break in here for just a second? We, we kind of thought that it was possible that since the, um, Butters were being contacted today, about today's meeting out there, we thought it would be possible that they might come today. We've reached out and tried to, we haven't gone to each house, and that should come next, I suppose. Um, but we thought that they would, they were, they were contacted for, for today's meeting.
Well, and if that well issue, if that well issue can't be overcome, that whole, that whole issue is mute, right?
Yeah, I guess, you know, there's a, there's a balance between how long will it take to get it resolved, or could it be resolved, to do we have to move forward at some point?
Right.
I mean, we're in the process actively pursuing grants and congressional appropriations and all kinds of stuff. In some cases, if we get the funding, we have to use it within, you know, a year or so. So, uh, at some point, we'd have to call it, basically. If it looks like it's an issue that's not going to be resolved, um, then we'd have to look closely at the other site.
I think it'll probably be a month or two before we get some kind of an answer on what's our direction to go over there, so.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I mean, that's, that's a reasonable timeframe. If we get an answer, that would be terrific.
We've been working on it for a couple of years now, actually, so, to get it resolved.
That doesn't sound too promising, Jeff. You've been working on it for a couple of years and expecting an answer in a half, in a month and a half.
Do you know the, have the panelists?
Oh, no. I mean, th- this session is for discussion.
Right.
We're not going to make any decisions tonight. There, we have to do, we do have to speak with the attorney to get an idea of what a document would look like. But bringing up our concerns and the concerns of the community that might come up in this project are important to get them out there now so people are, you know, can hear what's happening through the minutes or watching this meeting or however. Uh, I've spoken to a lot of people, and it's all been positive. There's been a few questions here and there. In fact, I was at the Chester House working today. And, uh, I told them about the meeting. I told them to come out there, and they were basically pretty much in favor of it with some reservation and some questions because it is right in their backyard and stuff. But people are, they're, you know, the more we talk about it, the more we deal with it and stuff, I think the more the issue becomes known to people. And that's helpful as we go forward and stuff. And, and all the questions that we come up with and all, all the concerns we have are important. And anything that we hear from the community is really important to bring it out and talk about it, the questions, uh, you know, or whatever else happens. And I think we're doing our due diligence, you know, to get to where we have to get. Now, eventually, we're going to get to a point, I don't, I don't know how, if we had, if both options were open, do we make the decision? Is it there, you know, whose decision? I know it's our final decision, but what do we base it on? I mean?
Well, here's, here's a couple of things, and I apologize, but, um, you, you need to consider what those two parcels are used for now or have been used for.
Yeah.
You know, the Jeff, the, the well field, Canal Street well field, it's used for well. You pull water out of the ground. If, if the change, there's a change to the allowed use there, then we could use it for other things. But the town right now is not using it for anything else. The Academy Building property is used for other stuff. You know, there've been military reenactments. There's been parking for vendors for sale on the green. There's been other uses of that particular property, and it's expansion lot for the cemetery. So, I think those are the types of things that we need to consider. You know, if the greenhouse were plopped on that particular property, how would it impact the town relative to the use of that particular property? And, you know, from my perspective, I can see positives and negatives to both. You know, it's like, we put the greenhouse there, it's not going to take up the entire lot. We could still use it for, for parking. Whether you could do reenactments there or not, I don't know. It's not something that you might have as much room as you would want to. But, you know, those are the types of questions that are rattling around in my head. It's like, how does this impact the future use of that particular piece of property for the town? And if we're going to have a new walking path through there and a bridge across the river and more access to that area, then maybe it makes a lot of sense to put it there because you're already getting that foot traffic passed there. You have parking spaces for a few people, handicapped, accessible, whatever. And then, um, that would be an attraction for people to come and visit the town green. So, you know, there, there's a number of things that I would want us to talk about and consider as we work through this, um, that takes into account all of the various aspects of either site.
You know, one thing I was just thinking about also is there, we talked, you talked about the sale on the green, and now it's going to be the Chester Festival, Fall Festival in September, um, which is great. And maybe you want to come together, have a little booth on the green.
We are, we are going to have.
And just talk to these people who are coming through and give them your ideas on what you're doing. I mean, I found this strategic plan information very helpful for me to read. And we know that that's a long-term, you know, it's a five-year project or projection. But, um, it just dawned on me when Lee talked about the sale on the green that, and, and their base of this, the Chester Fall Festival is going to be based a lot with agriculture. That's my understanding. Um, so, I thought, wow, this might be a good opportunity.
Right.
They're, I'm sorry.
No, and to this point, I mean, I think, yeah, ultimately, it's going to be a balance. You know, there's going to be some impacts that could be considered negative because you're losing something. If it's nothing else, the square footage. Um, but what are the gains? And, and how do we evaluate those? Uh, and again, I don't think it's a stretch to consider both sites in terms of economic development. I mean, how, how many people are we going to attract to this site versus that site? Uh, how much use are they going to make of the local businesses? Um, what's the traffic going to be like? How can we accommodate them? All of that stuff. That's all reasonable to talk about and compare from one to the other.
And I guess, Robert, not to put more burdens on your shoulders, but if you guys can do that comparative analysis for us, that'd be very helpful. Um, just thinking about, okay, if it's at the well field site, here the positive impacts, here the negative. And if it's at the Academy Building site, here the positive and negative. So, I mean, I came up with my own list, but I spent 10 minutes doing it, so.
Yeah, no, I think we should do it. I think that makes sense.
Sean?
Yes, this is a question. Obviously, this is going to be a public problem. And the question is, how do you balance?
Sean, you want to grab the mic so people can hear you on? Grab a seat.
How do you, um, um, balance public access to this, because it is on public land, with the idea that people who are growing something are not necessarily wanting people walking through and mucking with what they, what they have? So, I'm just wondering how that all works out.
Right, yeah. And that's an interesting balance as well because we, we want this to serve primarily to serve the people of Chester. So, the people of Chester will be growing things in there, essentially. Anybody who, what we've established so far is anybody who lives, works, or goes to school in Chester can request space to grow. Um, but we want tourists who come to town, visitors that come to town, to be interested in the greenhouse, to be enthralled by the possibility, to view it as a destination. So, we have to find a balance between people being able to go there, kind of experience what it's like, see what people are doing when they're growing there, with having some level of, you know, security and privacy for the people who are working in there as well. I think one of the ways to accomplish that is, is basically ours. You know, we don't want people wandering through when no one's there. Uh, so, you know, we would have to limit access to people to the greenhouse when we know people aren't going to be in there. Uh, I don't think anybody's going to go in there and disturb somebody's growing area if there's a bunch of other people working in there. Um, but, you know, when the, when the thing is vacant for one reason or another, we don't want people wandering through, so.
Robert, have you, sorry.
No, that's all right.
Have you guys thought about what the primary product would be that would be grown? I mean, is it going to be vegetables, flowers? Do you have any idea, or?
That's entirely up to, what we're looking at this as, is somebody requests space in the greenhouse, and it's an allocation. You give them a spot, whatever it is, four by eight feet or whatever, raised bed inside the greenhouse. If they have a disability, it's an ultra-weight raised bed. It's entirely up to them as long as it doesn't conflict with the user agreement.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we don't want you, you know, we don't want you growing wheat, for once, so, as an example. Or some noxious thing in there, that kind of thing. But it's entirely up to them because we want them to have the experience they want to have that they can't have otherwise. You know, like, you know, I'd really like to have cut flowers on my table in December. So, if you want to grow cut flowers until winter, that seems like a great fit for you. Um, so again, as long as it fits into the user agreement, um, there's nothing you're doing that's disturbing someone growing next to you, putting them at risk, that kind of thing. It's open to them.
Right, okay.
And, and we also want to have some space in there where we can begin to offer these programs, both in collaboration with the schools, but even for adults, kind of a continuing education thing, mentoring. Someone says, "Hey, I've never grown X before." Well, we have somebody who can help you do that. So, why don't you try it this season? We'll work with you and, and help you learn about it. Seed saving, you want to use heirloom varieties, we have people who know how to do that. Um, so, it's really pretty broadly open in terms of what people want to do with the space.
Thank you.
You have an issue or a question before? Did I, no?
I think I'm good. I think it's ongoing. I mean, it's a discussion.
Did it?
So, more questions are going to arise and.
I mean, the more we talk about it, the more we could flush out all the concerns that we hear. One thing that I have noticed is there's really nothing that's a deal breaker for me. And I haven't heard one thing that says, "Oh, man, we can't have this. It's not going to work. It's, it's, we can't do it. It's too much of a hurdle." All the concerns seem relatively minor and fixable or doable. And I, I think we can get through all this, whatever the concerns are, and, and, and still make it a reality.
Well, and some of the concerns may be like the legal or this or that. But we can do that. Yeah. So, I think it's a really positive thing. And from what I'm hearing from all the board, it's super positive. And everything I've heard from people who I've talked to about it, super positive. So, I'm with you, like, okay, so how are we going to manage these details? But let's manage them. Let's have Julie talk to the attorney and start looking at that.
The other thing I want to emphasize too. Some people have raised the issue of, well, what happens in terms of the impact on, on a taxpayer? I mean, really, is there any chance we're going to be footing the bill here? And, you know, the model is now, and the model is in the five-year plan, we pay the bills. I mean, there's no question. Uh, the nonprofit has to raise the money and we'll pay the bills. Um, and again, I don't think, the, the projected operational costs that we see are consistent with other nonprofits. It's certainly manageable. Uh, and I think, given how many boxes the project takes, uh, we have access to all kinds of grants because we, there's all kinds of things that we're doing and covering and serving. So, uh, I don't think there's going to be any issue in, in that regard. We're going to pay the bills. The taxpayer's not going to be asked to, to foot the bill.
Well, I certainly appreciate all the effort and work that you guys have put into the presentation that we got and the discussions that we've had tonight. I really appreciate
Anybody else have any other comments or concerns? Anybody out on the, uh, on our Zoom audience? So, we, we have a little bit of work on our end. We're going to do, uh, start doing some research on the legal end. And I think we should probably carry this as a future agenda item on every meeting, just to get an update.
Just keep talking about it, yeah.
And Lee will be attending the meetings with the Community Greenhouse Committee, and we could update the board, uh, every week as far as the progress on that end. And we could share the progress that we make as a town on our end with the board. And eventually, we'll have to make some hard choices and some, uh, decisions. But I think the more input, the more conversations that we have on this level, the more it'll help when we finally get to that point, and the more buy-in we'll have with the community. And I think it's a huge positive for the community in a lot of ways. Economic development, education-wise, community-wise, pride-wise, aesthetic-wise, architecture. I mean, I can't imagine what that building would look like up. Need to look, you probably back in the 1930s, if you just looked at that building in a backdrop of the woods and the scenery around there and stuff with flowers and stuff growing out of it, it'll just put you at a different timeframe for sure.
And this is a big project for us, so it's, it's a work in progress. I mean, we're trying to figure out all of the details. So, the more we talk about it, it helps us too because we get to define it. Sometimes we're forced to define it because you're asking a specific question that we haven't fully thought through. So, it forces us to think that through and have the discussion and do the research. So, that's really helpful for us as well.
Anything else? Well, thanks, Robert, and thanks to your group for all that you've been doing and working.
And thanks for your time. Thanks for listening to us.
Well, it's exciting.
It is exciting.
Project.
Thanks.
That's quite the project. Heather's got all the parts in her barn. Thanks, guys. Get my glasses on so I can see what I'm doing. Uh, next item on our agenda is.
Hey, aren't you going to give us one of those? Are those the bullet points?
It's a summary of the program.
I'm sorry.
Actual things that we're hoping to offer.
I mean, is that, were you intending to leave those for us, for somebody?
I'm happy to give them to you. Um, I didn't want to interrupt you, so.
No, you're part of me.
You can interrupt any time you like. That's what, that's what you're here for.
Potential, potential is the big word. Uh, programming ideas, things that we would like to do, not necessarily at the start. Programming ideas, things that we would like to do, not necessarily at the start, but definitely, once we get home.
And most of those have been in other documents we've given you, but we kind of just pulled them out, compressed them.
And yes, and that's what we talked about at the meeting.
Right. Some of them are core programs that we absolutely want to offer, like collaboration with the schools. Others are aspirational. If we can do it, if we're funded, we'll do it.
But when you're in the process of brainstorming, it's really great that you come up with something like this, because you can refer back to it, you know? And in that brainstorming creative period, some things may come up that you forget about, but then, you know, it's there for you. So it's a good planning strategy.
It's a good summary to have and reflect back on. Thank you very much for this information.
Not that I forget anything. Not that I forget anything.
All right, thanks, thank you again. Next item is a coin drop policy. We have a draft policy that's in your package. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to go through it. We don't have to take any action on it today. It's more for review and see, have some discussion on it, and if there's any changes or ideas or thoughts on this, on what maybe could be different or what we should do different.
I have a few.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I didn't see, maybe I missed it, but I, I know the state has changed their policy for, for this stuff. Now, they used to have to sign the, the permission to be on the state highway before it came to select board. Well, this year, they flopped it so that it has come from the select board and then goes to them. But I think they should have signed written permission from Agency of Transportation on-site when they're doing the coin drop. So, so that, you know, they have the permission from the state, because it is state highway. So I think that should be in there.
So just clarify as far as that permission goes.
Yeah, they, they should have written.
The permit on-site.
Right. They should have written permission from the state. Also, I don't know, this, it says attire here, but I think we should specify that they have to have high-visibility clothing if they're in the road.
They're also going to be wearing the vest.
Like, like a traffic vest?
They're going to be, I think it says so here.
I might have missed that.
That's okay.
Well, it says, "Safety vests worn by those approaching vehicles," but I think Jeff's point is everybody who's.
Everybody that's out there should have.
As water the bridges, I wear one.
You should, I mean.
If you're going to be on the state highway right of way, anywhere near it, and you're part of a group that's doing something like this, safety is paramount. And if it matters to, you know, if it means to wear an orange vest or whatever, yes.
And I think those are state mandated, aren't they?
I don't know if it's in the, in the state permit.
I thought it was.
It may, it may be, but it doesn't hurt to restate it, you know? And, I mean, if I was running a coin drop or whatever, I wouldn't allow 13 people to be in the road. I'd say, okay, four is the limit. Here's your spot, you know? But I don't know if we need to dictate that, but if they're.
It's not a bad idea to think along those kinds of lines.
No more than four people.
That's a busy space right there, between those two roads.
Yeah, I think safety, safety is paramount, and having those things in mind, the fewer people in the road, the less likely they're going to get hurt.
How many does it take to hold a bucket up or a boot or whatever, you know?
How many do you want?
I, I would, you know, for me, it would be four, but, you know, we could probably put six in there, and then whoever's running the, the thing should be, use common sense or whatever. But, you know, it should be just brought to their attention, anyway.
But Jeff, if you're done, I have one.
Yep.
So under signage, it says signage announcing the coin drop and its recipients must be posted at either end of the coin, coin drop zone? I would suspect or expect that we would have signs further away than that. You know, you don't want to run up to a coin drop and say, oh, I didn't realize this was happening, but assign 500 feet or 1,000 feet on either end of it, I think would be a better option, not just traffic cones, but.
Oh, yeah.
A sign or something.
The Legion had two, two signs on either end.
But I think, you know, 500, 1,000 feet away, whatever, just to let people know. I was driving somewhere, I can't remember where it was, and my driveway came out onto the road, I guess it was Papa Dungeon, and I came around a corner, and there's a guy standing there. It's like, well, the sign is up by whatever, so I didn't even miss it, hit, see it. But the point is that more signage is better, just to warn people that that's.
Coming up, slow up, careful.
Right, yeah.
Well, and you know, we haven't had this, are you done?
I had one other, one other point, under the rules, where it's, number one, all fundraising must support a Chester bona fide, charitable, et cetera. I would think that would limit, and maybe that's the point, is limit the coin drop collection to charities or groups or organizations that are specifically part of the Chester community. So Ruckup would not be able to use our.
But our Legion does the same thing. I mean, our Legion provides those, some kind of services, and we're providing to Chester.
But the point is that I think Ruckup does a good, provides a good service, it's just, you know, who do we pick? And I, you know, I'm not arguing with that, I'm just bringing it up as a point of discussion.
I agree. There's that statement, that's, yeah. Go ahead.
However, exceptions to this rule will be at the discretion of this Chester Select Board. So there is the power to be able to do that if.
Yeah, I understand why have that in there. You know, if it's just going to be at our whim, you know, we can decide, no, yes, whatever. So I guess it's, from my perspective, down the road, somebody comes up that, you know, we don't think benefits Chester directly, how do we say no?
Say no.
If we have that, well, you said no for whatever reason. I don't know, just, just thinking about it.
I, I like the fact that it's more Chester-orientated.
Sure.
As far as, you know, the connection with the town, what's going on. The exception being there that a worthy organization comes along, and we all agree that it's worthy, and that gives us a little bit of leeway in there.
Yeah.
I, a part of it was, this says three.
Yeah, I was thinking two. I was thinking two also.
I was thinking one.
I underlined May, so we know that that's.
I was thinking, I was thinking four.
Coin number three.
I think, I think three, because.
I think two.
No, I'm going to stick with three.
This is the thing, I remember, and I can't remember perfectly, but there was a lot of pushback from the Select Board.
To have any of them.
To have any of them five years ago or something. And we're going from zero, well, one last year, to three. That's one every two months or something. I, I rather like do one or two and assess it in two years and then decide to change it. But if we're only, and I like the dates, you know, but April, May, June, July, August, September, seven months, three, that's every two months. And I think people hate them, so.
Can, can I bring up a point? I can tell you when the one that was Friday?
Yeah.
Everybody's complaining about speeders. That slowed them down coming into town. There was, the traffic through town was reasonable speed from there, the whole time.
From that point on.
So.
That's a hidden, a hidden benefit that I really didn't consider.
They, they, they come into town, they have to slow down. They don't have to donate, but they have to slow down.
Was it a good day?
For the Legion? It was fairly good. I, I, I don't know the exact numbers.
Yeah, but.
So what's the consensus of the board for?
Sean has a question.
Go ahead, Sean. Yeah, that one.
Jeff, I was wondering, I heard you say that it flopped so that you had to get the Select Board first before you got state highway? Is that what I understood?
Yes.
So do you want that?
It used to be you had to get the state.
Right. But do you want that to be more than 30 days lead time to get the Select Board? Because I don't know how long it takes to get the state. Because it says 30 days in there, which means someone could.
Yeah, it says that a minute, um. No, not, not so much, I mean, we, we may get it approved here, but if, if they can get a hold of Mark Pickering, who's the guy that gives out these permits, they could get it within days.
Okay, I just didn't know, I didn't know whether the, having that being, you have to put an application in 30 days before the coin drop.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't care if we do 60 days.
So that you have to, so that you can schedule a meeting, get the meeting done, and then go to Mark Pickering, and that makes it tight. And then that could be one that would be on the schedule and wouldn't necessarily get used, and you'd only have two instead of three.
No, three's a lot.
So we just have to.
Arm wrestle? Okay, we could compromise.
Well, we got to find out exactly what the timeframe.
First, the number goes, I'm more concerned about the safety thing.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, it's, and they are good fundraisers. They, they, they do a lot of good. I've heard, I know sometimes they get between $3,000 and $5,000. We had a couple of people that stopped, and they asked what it was for, and when they said it was American Legion, they pulled out $100 bills and put it in there, so, you know, it's.
So would that be something else we would want to add to this, is identifying what the, what the drop is for?
Well, we do.
I would think.
I would think you'd have to, no?
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, what Jeff just said is somebody says, you know, what's this for? So is there a sign that says?
There was a sign, but I think they just.
Oh, okay.
Between watching traffic or whatever, you know.
Right, right.
Watching kids run out.
Right.
So we, we have to clarify what Sean brought up and what you were talking about, Jeff, as far as that timeframe and how that works, just to make sure we have that straight. And how, you know, does it overlap, and who's first and who's not, or whatever.
Well, we, we can give our permission. If, if they don't end up getting it from AOT, then I guess they can't have it.
Okay.
That's, I mean, that, that's on them. That's the way I see it.
But it could work the other way, too. They could get permission from the state, and we could turn around and tell them.
No, that's, that's what changed. They have to get permission from us before the state will even consider.
Even consider.
Right.
That makes sense.
Okay, all right.
So under location, it says, the location is between the entrance to Mountain View and the entrance to Marshall Road. I know, and it says later, it can be any other location, but is there something specific to that location that makes sense?
I understood that it was the only place that the state would allow, because of slow down and speed up.
Okay.
So I think for us to put it in there, any other locations, is, I don't think there are any other locations because of what the state directed.
They require it being a certain distance from the last speed change on the highway.
Okay.
So that's where it ends up being.
I think it was looked at one other time to see if there are other locations in the town that were compatible to meet all the requirements of this. And I, and I kind of agree with you. I don't think there was another location for a lot of the reasons that you were stating and talking about, you know, location from a corner, location from the speed change, still on the highway, you know, busy intersections and stuff.
Yep.
So I'm not positive, but that might be the only spot in town that.
Right.
We'd get away with it, is allowed.
Well, they, they used to hold them in front of the diner years ago, I remember that.
And now they can't.
No, they can't, because that's right where the, the town highway and the state highway changes.
That's from 2030 to 2025.
That's right. It was about the diner. Someone wanted it at the diner and couldn't have it.
So, you know, we have one spot, it's a, it's a busy spot, so we just got to work out the details as far as it goes. And the question that I had before, just to fill in notes to revise this, was how many?
So that's under supervision? Oh, how many coin drops?
Yeah, one, two, three, five, 10?
Well, the year it says may, up to three coin drops may be held in a year. So again, you know.
We don't have to give permission.
Pardon me?
We don't have to give the permission, just because we're, we're, got it in here as three, we don't have to get, you know.
Oh, absolutely, I agree. But and I know in the, you know, it used to be for the auxiliary, the fire auxiliary as well, what, the only one I remember ever, you know, being really every single year. But, yeah, I think we will have some leeway in that. You know, we don't have to, if, the word is may, and it might be one.
But the next coin drop, pay attention to the traffic in town.
Exactly.
You see the benefit.
I still rather say up to two. I think three's a lot.
I think three's a lot, too.
And it's going from pretty much zero recently to two. So I think two's enough.
Well, if you put the word in there, may, then when you're here and we're discussing it, and we can make that decision. You want to, you know, if the third one comes in, it doesn't mean we have to give anybody who signs up permission.
Right, but then we have, we have no, like Lee was saying about the last sentence in one, you know, exceptions to the rule, I mean, it's the same thing. Do you want two or do you want three? Because probably we're going to have the ones, and we're going to be sitting here going, nah, I don't feel like three. I don't want to say that. I rather the policy dictate that, than, than me saying to the Girl Scouts, sorry.
Right.
Well, that brings up another point, Heather, and that's under supervision, where it's talking about minors. I think that's a bad idea.
Yeah, I, I, I meant, I shouldn't have said the Girl Scouts, but I just mean.
But I, I agree with you. I think that if we let the policy dictate the number, instead of us having to make that decision, look like the bad guys. You know, personally, we've had two requests this year. I think that's fine. You know, we have the local organization, which I'm happy to say, yeah, go ahead, and then Ruckup, which also does good work. But, you know, I, if the Girl Scouts or the Boy Scouts or somebody else came up to us, it's like, I don't think that's a great idea, because I, you, you know how unpredictable little kids are.
Absolutely, and you're absolutely right, and it did say that. I just was trying quickly to think of fundraising.
Right, but the point is that, that was the point I was going to bring up, is under supervision, I think we should make this adults-only, period.
I agree.
21 or above.
Right.
No kids, I don't care what the ratio is, you could have, and, and this is like five to one minors to adults. That's really a bad idea.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, it says 21 years or older, so I like that. And I'm sorry to say the Girl Scouts, I was just, historical society, how's that?
It says 21 somewhere, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it says.
For the supervision.
Supervision, but it says.
Oh, just supervised by.
Yeah, you can have minors to adults, and individuals under 16 may not stand in the roadway soliciting contributions. So it's kind of in there, but even so, I, I think it should be adults only, 21.
Supervision 21, but no one under 18, I would hope, I mean.
It says, as per state statutes, individuals under 16 years of age will not stand in the roadway and solicit contributions.
And I, I like Jeff's point of four, a limit of four to six. If you had four doing the collections and two at each end of 500 feet or 1,000 feet away, possibly, but even that, I think, is unnecessary with the correct signage. So I, I would be happy to say four, no more than four, as part of the collection.
Well.[1663.25]
And, and some, some folks have said two, so how about we stay with three and see how it works?
I think we can, I really want two at the most. I think you can go up. I, right, you can go up, but you aren't gonna politically be able to go down.
So I need to clarify that. I meant four people, not four coin drops.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good with the two coin drops.
You're good with two?
But I say, no more than four people.
I like the four people in the road.
Yeah, four people, two coin drops.
Four people in the road?
One location. We gotta get a three in there somehow. Just kidding.
Four people?
Four people. Four people. Two.
I mean, all together or just in the road? Just in the road?
No, in the road. In the road at one time.
And you can have four people on the side, you know.
Right, so you can swap out, so you don't have some passing out from the heat or something.
And then two drops a year.
Sounds good.
And then one location.
That's what we have.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah?
And I'm really happy we're finally doing this. And we can come to it when you have a policy most of the time. You can come back to it.
I don't remember what I said.
Four people, two drops, one location.
No, I think, so number one, we were talking about the Chester charitable organization. I, I think so, yeah.
But we aren't voting on this till we see it.
Yeah, no, it needs to be revised.
It's gotta be revised.
You know, fix it up and we'll, we'll, we'll review it.
I may, I may get you to change your mind to three.
I, I don't see anything. Anything else on this policy? All right. We've got those, uh, the state permission thing, the safety clothing, how many in the road, and the signage distance for safety, how many people, how many drops and location.
The police department has to know at least one week prior to ensure compliance.
Yeah. I think so, unless somebody thinks 18 years. Amy's clarifying the age limit. So 18 above or 21 and above?
I think.
Well, the point is to be supervised by adults, 21 years.
I'm good with 18.
Okay, 18. With adult supervision. Just kidding.
Senior citizens with adult supervision.
Over 18, but under 70. That's age discrimination and we can't even talk about that, so that's gone.
I'm just talking about the definition of adult supervision.
It's true.
Yeah.
So that's all set for that. Next item. One, oh, okay, sorry. I thought you wanted to say something, Sean, sorry. Next item is the Police Advisory Committee. Initial review.
Do we want to wait for Julie on this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say.
I think so.
I think so, too.
Because there's some background information that's not on this.
I mean, and I have read it and looked at it, and I have questions, but I think she's the person that needs to answer them. Oh, okay.
I don't, I wouldn't have any answers. I've, I've read it also myself and we have talked about it. This is just from one town, and it was, I think, I forget the name of the town.
Milton.
Milton?
Yeah.
Yep. I would like to maybe see some other examples, also from some other towns, because this one is more towards just an advisory committee.
Correct.
And there's other towns that have taken it in the other direction.
Yep.
And I would just like to compare the two and see what the, what the differences are and what goes on as far as how they would work and how they go along. But you're right, I think we could have this discussion at a future board meeting when Julie's here to, to help us along with this one.
I agree.
And the next thing is, I don't know if they're here or not, the entertainment permit for the Heritage Deli and Bakery.
Yeah, they're here.
Heritage deeds.
Yep, you got them here.
You, yeah.
We have them.
Yeah, but she has the, the one that's supposed to be signed, I think.
Right here. Oh, oh, the, oh, not the copy.
The real ones, we have copies.
Oh, the one for Heritage Deli?
Yep.
Yep.
And I'm sure it was checked through the police.
Yes.
I think it's great that we're seeing more outdoor entertainment and COVID, it could be one of the real positives of getting over that. But the outdoor, it's just so nice to see so much outdoor activity.
Yeah, they've done a lot down to the diner. They got a, basically a stage down there now for the entertainment. They got a nice picnic table area, you know, fenced off and.
And Heritage has done a nice job, too.
Yeah, they're still working on it.
Yeah.
We can have live music at the Heritage, that's the, uh.
The diner.
Great.
I've got tickets from two years, a year and a half ago from a concert in North Hampton. That was last, it was last March it was supposed to be, and that was it. And that hasn't.
They haven't refunded your money or rescheduled the concert?
Rescheduled at one time, but then it was still in the middle of COVID, you know, so then I haven't heard from them, but whatever. That's not on our agenda, so it doesn't matter. So I have the entertainment permit for the Heritage Deli and Bakery.
Uh huh.
And everybody's read through their copy that they have and stuff. And I think the first one's coming up in a couple of weeks. I forget when it is, but.
Yeah, I think I read it in town, Brad. When it was gonna be.
And right after that entertainment permit are two cemetery deeds.
Right.
So we better have entertainment before we need the cemetery deeds.
Cover both ends of it. One of them is for Charles Record. One of them is for Molly Goodwin.
Oh, thank you, my dear. Are the, so these are the ones we can sign?
Besides not having Julie for the Police Advisory Committee, the chief was supposed to be here, too.
So something may be happening.
That paperwork, make it down through the line?
Yep.
All set? All good. Still did bring up the, the warrants for signatures later, some, if people get a chance, if not tomorrow, stop it or however.
We can do it right, yeah, okay. Can we do it right now?
Future agenda items, new business. Anybody have any issues or items they would like to see on future agendas?
Um, you, before COVID, we talked about having a committee or having a vision of what we want to do with the Academy Building. And I just think we should bring that up again about how we want to develop the vision for the, not necessarily the exact vision, but how are we going to get to the place where we have a vision of that beautiful building? And I was reminded today by our little field trip. So I think we should just bring that up again.
Yeah, Julie, could you give us an update on the work being done on the ceilings and other places in there? And maybe we need to start making a plan of how we're gonna move forward. We know we can't eat it. We've gone through that whole thing and looked at everything in the basement and everywhere else in the place. But let's start using it. You know, let's start having exhibition rooms and let's start being able to go through and have some of the historical information available to us. And, and, because that's not part of the, necessarily the historical society, but what it is, it's part of the Chester Academy. And, uh.
Well, and if we have a vision, what do we have to do to get the building in the right condition, to get to the vision? And I think my personal vision, which I just want to put it on the, but the historical society is part of what that building should be.
Well, that's correct. And, you know, they, they have the lease, they're doing, but we might also then be able to guide them. I mean, I don't like to go all the way back to the eighties when I was on the board of the Select Board, but those rooms were available to go through and to be there, and the kids could come from the school and go there. And yeah, it can't be done in the winter, I understand that. But there's some really fantastic stuff in there.
There is.
And so I'd love to see a plan, perhaps, where we can get that open and to the public.
I think it'd be a great discussion to have. I mean, we've, we've been plugging away at the mechanical parts of it, making sure the roofs are okay and making sure the building's sound.
Yep.
But we really never haven't talked in depth about the contents of the building and the use of the building.
Right.
But at least we've been keeping up on the maintenance end of it, so we have a building that we can discuss.
And, you know, we've got that plaque, when I was in legislature, I got that plaque for us to put right there, the historic nature of that building, being a school and the whole, I mean, it was, it's a wonderful building. And it, yeah, it's gonna take a period of time. You're not gonna just click your finger, it's gonna be done, but maybe we could have a plan.
Well, and I think we need to have a vision about what we want to do with it even before the plan.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, and if.
We take a field trip to it maybe next time, we have a flagboard.
A field trip or?
Just, just check it out, see what's going on and what we need to do.
It's good to visualize things like that and take a walk through the building.
I'd like to just kind of jump into this discussion. Two things come to mind. Relative to property that the town of Chester owns, I think there should be a discussion about how much property we own and whether we need to own that much property. I understand the firehouse, the Academy Building, the Jeffrey barn, but I think there's a lot of property that the town owns that we don't need to, or we shouldn't, because it's taking off the tax rolls. And so from a standpoint of the policy or the, you know, the overall goal of where we want to go, what the plan is, that would be a good part to discuss for understanding what we as a town want to do with the properties that we own and whether or not we need them. You know, I'm thinking of the one down on Route 11 where the house washed down the river in Hurricane Irene. I mean, we own a piece of property out there and we're not doing anything with it, why should we? And so that's, what, part of the issue is, you know, are we making the best use of our taxpayers' dollars for owning these properties when we might not do? The other thing, sorry, Heather, the other thing is, you had brought up a while ago, donation policy, and so chasing that a little bit to see if that's something we need to resurrect or bring to the fore.
So what you, you really want to look at, which I don't know if I've ever seen, is an inventory of the town properties?
They're, they're.
Well, it's, it's in the, it's in the annual report.
Yeah, I, I've seen that. It's in the annual, yeah, exactly.
But I'm not sure I've ever gone through it and.
We own a lot of property as a town.
There's quite a few obscure ones that kind of don't make sense almost.
Right.
They don't make sense, but why do we own this?
Yeah, yeah, why do we own this piece of property?
It'd be an interesting list to go through and discuss and see what, you know, where is it, what it's for, what was, sometimes it's donated to the town with.
Well, and that, that brings up other properties that are abandoned or vacant or whatever that is looking to be donated to the town. Do we have a policy about how we assess whether or not the town wants to take a particular piece of property? So those are discussions that I think we ought to have.
Be an interesting topic, for sure.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, yeah, I agree with that.
Give you a lot of details on what, what's there.
What did you say, Sean?
The page from the office that has the properties. There's a lot of information about what's there.
I've never studied that.
The other question that came to mind is, we went through a bunch of hoops several years ago about donating or selling a piece of property to the Sunoco, because they were gonna put in a drive-through, blah, blah, and what's happened?
They haven't done, I, they haven't done anything that they said they were going to do, did they?
No.
We should have had a clause in that one that said they gave it back to us for nothing.
Say what?
They paid, they moved the pumps, they did something, yeah.
The Sunoco and Dunkin' Donuts couldn't agree on a sign.
Oh, interesting. I think that space behind there anyway is too small.
That was part of what happened.
I voted against that.
I'm sure that was huge, or what happened, but that was some of it.
Wow, yeah.
Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Yeah, that's funny.
Anything else? Future agenda items? Those are some interesting topics.
Yeah.
I like the, I like, I like all three of them.
The inventory's interesting.
The next item on our agenda is executive session regarding a police matter to, to discuss potential civil litigation with counsel. Amy, are you set up for us to still talk with counsel?
I don't think he's on.
I, I think.